Call meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Ames District Board meeting on Veterans Day, November 11, 2020. Please join me on the, or for the pledge of allegiance.
The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The United States of America stands one nation in the name of our Constitution, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. Carrie, would you like to do in-person or roll call votes?
In-person is fine.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. A motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion to approve?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion is carried. Public comment. This time, we're encouraging the general public to provide comments. However, due to the COVID restrictions and our Zoom meetings and all that goes with that, we're asking them to do that via email. And the email is provided in the packet, is posted, or the packet is posted. Please send your comments to that email address. They will be received and they will be presented at the next meeting. Thank you for that. Next is presentations from guests and representatives to the board. First on the agenda is excellence at Ames. And we will invite Shannon McCaslin, Dean of Students, in. Shannon will be with us shortly, since we're trying to limit COVID, the number of people in any one given room. Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board. It's really nice to be here in person.
Nice to have you.
It's a special day as we honor the contributions of our country's military veterans. People like Mike Lehman, a second-year student and Army veteran. In the short 15 months he's been here, Mike has made quite the impact. He's been an active member of the Catalyst Leadership Program, National Society for Leadership and Success, and he's currently a peer coach and president of the Warriors to Scholars Veteran Club. He's working on a degree in sociology toward admission in the Ames Q and C program. And he plans to connect his degree to his passion, serving the people who have served. Quite apropos for today, I introduce to you the remarkable Mr. Mike Lehman.
Thank you, Shannon. Make extensions for this. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Happy Veterans Day. Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, esteemed members of the Ames Board of Trustees, and my fellow veterans, while I'm saying it, forgive me, a few minutes to share my journey with you. I grew up in the great state of Maine, and growing up there, I learned how to take care of myself at a young age. I grew up with a single mom in the town of Cassett. By the age 23, I decided that I needed change, so I joined the US Army, active duty. I shipped off to Fort Sill, Oklahoma, where I did nine weeks basic training and 11 weeks of my AIT training for 13 whiskey, which is a field artillery metallologist. After finishing top of my class, I was selected for an additional skill identifier course called Hotel One. Upon completion, I came down on orders for Carson, Colorado, where I joined the Second Brigade Combat Team, Fourth Infantry Division. I spent four years with Fourth ID, including one deployed in D-10 Iraq. Upon completion of my first contract, I re enlisted for Schofield Barrett's Hawaii, where I spent three years training for North Korea with 25th ID until my contract came to an end in 2013. I've been happily married to my beautiful wife, McCall, for 10 years. I have two crazy boys, Roland, who is nine, and Lincoln, who is seven. In July of last year, we decided that it was time for a change. So I came to Ames on a Wednesday in early August and decided to check out my options. And three hours later, I was enrolled as a student. Thank you. While enrolled, I've, like Shannon said, I've become a member of NSLS. I was voted president of the Student Veterans Organization within the first month, and I currently serve that role. And in August, I applied for peer coaching role and got it without a being... I got... It's an exciting role. It's great to help students and veterans. And it was seamless after doing Ames 101 and getting into Catalyst. It was a no-brainer to come work for Ames and pass on when it came to college students. But over the past year, Warriors to Scholars has brought the VA to campus for our student veterans to make sure that all their benefits are up in order and they're taken care of. We have also, the last one we did was in-person, right here in October, where we had numerous Ames programs involved, as well as PTK Honor Society. We have also participated in toy story talks, which we currently are this year, totally pending. We organized a book and clothing drive for Women's Domestic Abuse Shelter in the spring, this past spring, and began putting together a suicide awareness and prevention event for military and first responders, known as 22 Alive. 22 Alive has a special place in my heart. You see, in August, fall, 2019, one of my soldiers committed suicide. To this day, I personally blame myself for not being in better contact with them and not catching the warning signs. From that point on, it has been my mission to start spreading awareness and try to bring a stop to this epidemic. As of today, the event is set for this Friday, the 13th, Friday the 13th in COVID, from 11:00 to 1:00 and from 2:00 to 4:00, with a portion of the donations going to a new veteran scholarship fund designed for disabled veterans and veterans that no longer have benefits. We hope with the looming lockdowns coming that this event will still take place. While COVID-19 is a pandemic around the world that will affect us for 12 to 18 months, PTSD stays in a veteran and first responder's head forever. There is no vaccine to make this go away. And yet, we are being made to stay isolated in our homes, left to remember our past in silence. Most people do not know what it's like to be a veteran, to be forced into isolation. It drives even the strongest of us to our breaking point. Suicides are up 20% since COVID-19 lockdowns began. Just to put that in perspective, the rates of suicides of 2019 were 20 a day. 20 veterans a day were taking their lives before these lockdowns took over our lives and forced us away from each other. The cure cannot be worse than the virus. Lockdowns and forced isolation is just as bad as the virus for veterans. Now is not the time to run. Now is time to get to work. Let us come together with 22 Alive and get the message out to our entire community that we embrace our veterans and our first responders. And let them know that we are one family and this is our fight. In closing, I would like to thank you all for listening to my story, for allowing me to show you what is most important to me, and I hope to see you all at our future events. Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. We absolutely appreciate your message and certainly understand where you're coming from. Mark is starting it here. I was going to ask, how do we all go about getting donations to your program?
So with the flyer that I presented to you, there is a QR code on the bottom right side. You scan that with your camera, and it's a registration for either participation or volunteering or donations. That goes to the foundation's collection, and then that will push to building the new veteran scholarship fund.
And we can also get to it via the email address that's there?
Yes, sir. So when you go ahead and scan the QR code, the QR code on the bottom right, it'll send it right to another website, which is connected to the Ames Foundation, and that will directly go right into the foundation, and then they will direct it into the scholarship fund that we're creating.
So if they have trouble with the QR code, can they go straight to that veteransclub@ames.edu to donate? Or do you want them to go straight to the foundation to donate?
Try to go to the donation, just CC that it is for 22 Alive and for the Warriors to Scholars. And then I will get with Kelly.
Okay. So if the QR code doesn't work, let's go straight to the foundation, just like that.
Mike? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So Mike, thank you for sharing your story, and I just want to tell you that if you're from Maine, I'm from Massachusetts, so fellow New Englander. Yeah, I didn't notice your accent, though.
I've been gone for so long, but when I go home, it takes about a day.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I listen to my brother, and that's all it takes. So thank you for sharing your story, and we have a little something for you that I'll bring up to you in a second, just to thank you for taking the time. But, and I'm trying to breathe through the mask, and thank you for the swag as well. It's really important for us to hear not only our students and alumni's stories, and also what is important to you, as you said, because it helps us not only as a board, but certainly as a college, to keep the focus of why we're all here, which is for you and your story and what's important to you. So thank you for taking the time out of your day to be with us. And this is how we like to start our meetings, so that we have you in the front of our mind as we do the business of the college. So thank you very much for taking that time.
Thank you very much.
And of course, thank you for your service.
Have a great day. Have a great day in DC.
Thank you.
Thanks. Love this part of the meeting. Okay, representatives to the board, Student Government Association, Alicia.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Well, thanks again for allowing me to share the student events and projects. So first off with SGA, the Vice President of Academic Affairs, Ashley Edison, and our Vice President of Facilities and Operations, Terry Adams. They've been working really hard on making additional technology resources available for both students to check out from the Learning Commons, as well as take home to keep. Remote and online classes have been a really big challenge for students, who typically take traditional classes. And increased technology needs combined with fewer studying spaces on campus have made things extremely, extremely stressful. We are thrilled that the Learning Commons is working with us on this project. And also, Mr. Jensen has also committed to help support our initiative with these purchases as well, if needed. The next thing will be our campus activities programming, which they had a great Halloween with a huge turnout for the drive-in movie. The program enjoyed 472 attendees and over 30 volunteers keeping to, helping to distribute snacks and Ames swag. All attendees stayed in their cars, except to visit the restrooms while wearing face coverings. And volunteers also wore face coverings using contactless distribution strategies and maintained safe distances the entire time. Another fun upcoming event is the virtual salsa magic interactive Latin dance party, which is this Friday on November 13, at 5:30 PM. This program, in partnership with the CDI and Ames Q and C, it is open and free to the community, which is also for all of you guys. So we'd love to have you guys also attend this awesome event. The Center of Diversity and Inclusion also celebrated their second anniversary in October with about 80 individuals that attended the all-day safe event, as well as the virtual event on the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist by Professor Kendi, was a huge success for Ames and our community. Over 900 viewers, as well as the student-led discussions, have been a very big success. So those are just some updates on last month's events and some of this month's. So thank you, and you guys have a wonderful afternoon.
And well, thank you very much, Alicia. I appreciate it. You have a nice afternoon as well. Thank you for your presentation. Next up, and your representatives, is the Ames Faculty Association, Brooke Gelse.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can. Welcome, Brooke.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Chairman Oxegar, board members, Dr. B. I am here on behalf of the Ames Faculty Association today. And as I was reaching out to faculty members to get some accomplishments to present to you, what I think I'm finding is that the biggest accomplishment of faculty members right now is just this ability to transition, right? So going from remote to not remote, some synchronous learning, asynchronous, hybrid, face-to-face, maybe go back to remote again. And all of the learning that all of the faculty members are taking part in as well, with all of this technology. And as we just heard from the SGA president, we have really stressed out students right now. So I also feel like faculty is this face for students. We're having to be extra flexible with them. We are having to work with technology issues that we are not really all that great at sometimes, those sorts of things. So there's not a whole lot to report today about that. But in addition, we're doing mentorships and committees and big projects like Virtual Connect. All of that is still happening in the background while we're still teaching the students. So I'm finding that that is probably the biggest accomplishment, is that we are, we're just working our tails off right now. But I do have some, a couple things on our packet here. So I have Instructor of Art, Dan Augustin, has a couple pieces in the 29th Annual Governor's Art Show. It is at the Loveland Museum Gallery. So we've heard Dan's name a bunch of times. His work is out in our communities seemingly endlessly. Next on the list, I have Professor of History, Dr. Michael Booker. He teamed up with Sale, and they did the event, the Ballot Breakdown 2020. So Dr. Booker helped with that and educating students about voting and the propositions and things like that, so we'd have a better educated voter in general. One of the conferences attended recently was by Francie Roti. It's for the Colorado Community College Online System. They had their Connect Conference in October. So she went on both the 15th and 16th. And some of the sessions that we are interested in as faculty members here at Ames in particular is predicting the needs of culturally diverse online learners. That can be hard to assess when you are online with them. English as Second Language students, things like that. For instance, when they're in the classroom, we can work a little more closely with them. So being able to still be able to do that in an online environment is tricky. Creating an inclusive online environment, we're all about inclusivity at Ames, and we're trying to make sure that we continue that in synchronous sessions, even though we're online right now. These are big conversations that faculty members are having. The last thing, or item that I have today is by Denise Pearson. She is a professor of AAA and EDU. So what Denise Pearson has done is she partnered with Teach Colorado. And Teach Colorado is a newer nonprofit made up of K through 12 teachers who have gotten together and created mentorship and sort of coaching for students that are interested in going into the field of teaching. Their end goal basically is to provide more prepared and high-quality teachers into the teaching pool in Colorado. So what Denise did with her Intro to Education class is she set them all up with an individual teacher, the K through 12 teacher, and they had some one-on-one coaching. So through the coaching, they can talk about teaching just as the job in general and any questions that they happen to have. I think the example of one of our Ames students, their feedback, is a perfect wrap-up for this program. She said that she, the teacher, was very insightful and had great answers to my questions. Talking to her made me think that I'm not only going to be good at this, but make a difference in this world, and who doesn't want that? I thought that just sort of exemplified even Ames in general, right? We're all working so hard to make a change in the world, and our students are remarkable. And we are just here for them right now. And that's all I have for faculty. If there's any questions, I could take those. If not, have a wonderful afternoon.
Any questions for Brooke?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. We appreciate you being here.
Good afternoon.
Next on the agenda is Ames Staff Association Representative, Jen Seabor. Welcome, Jen.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxegar, trustee members, and Dr. B. It's nice to be with you this afternoon. Much like Brooke mentioned, I think staff are just trying to hunker down and stay safe and keep others safe and working away remotely. So not a lot to report in terms of community involvement this month. But much like Brooke said, I've also noticed a few other things. I think in the era of Zoom, it's giving people the opportunity to attend things that maybe they might not have been able to attend before, because it's easier to do so. I've been able to attend a few more committees myself, and our ASA leadership group has seen an increase in our, in the participation from staff among the college, which is always great. And I think I'm just noticing staff being able to join in on more committees and take active participation in some of the things we're working on across the college. So that's really great to see, and it's nice to see the collaboration among all the groups together. So, and also, you know, as no surprise, staff, they're continuing to go above and beyond for each other, even working remotely and working varying schedules. This is all represented in the Ripples and Recognition Report. You know, I always feel so good after reading the nominations, as I'm sure you do as well. This month, one in particular stuck out to me because I just really appreciated reading about the creative work that was done between multiple departments to continue the health fair. So the health fair, you know, it's a wonderful event and a great benefit that Ames provides to the employees to ensure that we all have the opportunity to stay informed about and to maintain our health. So it's great that that event was still able to be put on. So I'll go ahead and just read this short little nomination here. Darby Wilson and James Allen from Facilities and Operations, and Blake Ketchum and Matt Seawald from IT. The four of them were nominated by Rachel Walsh, who's the program coordinator for Work-Life Wellness. She says, "I would like to recognize and thank Darby Wilson and James Allen for all of their help with setting up for our health fair this year. They both took the time to meet with us to figure out the space and setup to ensure social distancing and went above and beyond with bringing in equipment, tables, chairs, and plenty of stations to ensure a smooth and organized event. Blake Ketchum took the time to make sure we would have a secure VPN connection, and Matt Seawald volunteered to come in early that morning to help our vendor access the secure network to help with participants using private health information and credit card information. They all willingly did this with a great and helpful attitude. The event was a success due to their expertise and willingness to do what they do best, and I certainly appreciate it." And I'd also just like to give a shout-out to Rachel and the rest of the wellness team for making sure that the health fair happened this year. So with that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Jen?
When was the health fair?
I'm sorry?
When was the health fair?
When was the health fair?
It was on September 30.
Thank you. Well, I don't see anybody else. So Jen, thank you very, very much for being here and for sharing the information with us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, I just want to make a comment. I know I speak for the entire board when I say how much we appreciate the information that we receive through these various reports. But especially now, we appreciate all of the stresses and the challenges that everybody is going through with COVID and how you are meeting those and still doing such an outstanding job for our students. And it's just, it's just very much appreciated by the board and all of us. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is action items. Degrees with Designation, Dr. Rothhammer.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxegar. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much.
Certainly. So Chair Oxegar, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, thank you for this opportunity to present this exciting action item to you today. In your board packet, there is support documentation for this action item. The documentation includes an overview of the degrees with designation, the slated requirement that our board must approve the degrees with designation prior to the college officially offering, as well as a list of the benefits to our students. Based on this supporting information, we request that the board approve Ames Community College offering the degrees with designation as listed in your board packets.
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Is Dr. Rothhammer? None? Well, hearing no questions, do I have a motion to approve?
I would move approval of the degree with designation proposal.
And I would second that motion.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think it's an amazing program. I'm really excited, and it sounds like it will be a great, another tool to market to new students and to the current students. So I'm really excited that Ames is doing this.
Thank you, trustee Rendell, and I would second that sentiment. I know we've talked about this for a long time, and it's great to see a kind of fruition. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, and congratulations, Dr. Rothhammer.
Thank you for your support.
You are very welcome. Next on the agenda, information items. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying it is Veterans Day, and I want to wish everyone out there on behalf of the board a very happy Veterans Day and a very, very sincere thank you for your service and your sacrifices. Any veterans out there, as well as your families who also share in those sacrifices and that service. Thank you. And I think, I think, you wanted to read that now? Okay. I think Dr. B. has something to share with us.
So this came in last minute, a few minutes ago, actually. One of our deans, you rec recall, Rob Abernathy, he's the dean of, gosh, he's got a long title, Workforce Development, Transportation, PSI, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So Rob is a vet himself, and he sent this email out to people in his division that are vets. And I asked if I could share his words publicly, because they're really quite beautiful. So he says, "Good day. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and appreciate the service you have selflessly given our country. You made the conscious decision to be a part of something bigger than yourself. The dedication and valor you displayed in service, while seemingly normal or common to you, is far from common amongst our fellow citizens. Along with you, I realize the personal impact our service had on ourselves and our families. To say this commitment is a positive sign of your strength and character would be a gross understatement. You've given far more than any layperson could possibly fathom. As we look back fondly, I hope, on the times we spent in the armed forces, I think we should consider how that contribution has prepared us to serve our community today, just in different ways. While I thank you for your service to our nation, I also thank you for all that you do for Ames. I am proud to say we are on the same team with a common purpose. So from one veteran to another, I truly appreciate..." So from one veteran to another, I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve alongside you. Happy Veterans Day. Respectfully, Rob Abernathy." Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Very, very much appreciated. Okay, so happy Veterans Day. Next, proposed meeting dates for 2021. Carrie, I think you're up.
Trustees, in your package, you have the proposed meeting dates for 2021, and this will come to you at the December 9 meeting as an action item, but we present them here for your review and planning purposes. The proposed meeting dates continue to be on the second Wednesday of the month. Retreat dates and meeting locations are also noted, subject to change due to COVID or any other situation. So they're in your packets for review. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on those? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and Carrie, the December meeting is on the 8th, which is, again, the second Wednesday. That is, that, don't we need to go later than that because of the...
I think that's next year.
...certifying or something that we do in December.
Well, yeah, we've always had it on the second Wednesday of the month, but since the first is on a Wednesday, that's true. We might need to look at that date. So, thank you, Trustee Peterson. We will check into that and make sure it falls within the no levy certification dates.
Right, yeah, that's it, yeah. Obviously, these aren't cast in concrete or anything.
Right.
Correct. Thank you. We'll check on that.
Any other questions? Any other conflicts? Okay, now, will we, will this come up for an action item later or?
It'll come up for an action item at our December meeting.
That's what I was thinking. So if we need to change that date, then we'll just notify everybody at that time during the action item.
Right.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, we'll move on. ACCT National Legislative Summit. Carrie, you still up?
I'm still up. So trustees, you may have received this flyer from ACCT in the mail, and it's the registration information for the 2021 National Legislative Summit. Currently, this is an in-person conference in Washington, DC. Dates are February 7 through the 10th. The early discounted registration is due on December 18th. So due to some processing of information, I would need to know by December 7th if you would like me to register you for that early rate. The early registration is important if you'd like to attend because that guarantees that you'll get a room in the conference hotel. After that date, it's sort of a free-for-all. Let's see. But after that, after December 18th, the registration fee does go up by $150. There is a cancellation deadline of January 14th, so there is that possibility to cancel. So do you have any questions on the ACCT National Legislative Summit registration?
Any questions on it?
No. I won't be going.
I'd just like to make a comment on it, just for your verification on that. This is a summit that I went to last year, and quite honestly, I didn't see a whole lot of benefit from us, for us. So it's something to consider if you'd like to talk to me about it. No, let me know, but that's just my input from attending it last year.
Just joking, if we do sign up for this, will this give us priority to the COVID vaccines?
Good thought there.
You know, just to follow up on your comment, I didn't go last year, I think, but, or did I? I don't remember.
No, no, I went with, maybe the year before, and I had the same feeling, you know, that it just was, but there was also a part of me that said it could be, it could be a much more significant event than what it is.
I just felt like we didn't do enough politicking, didn't do enough seeing our representatives and, you know, doing the stuff that I thought we were back there for. And I went back several years ago to Farmers Union, and I'll tell you what, they worked our tails off.
Well, they do.
From office to office to office, you know, and, I mean, we had no free time. It was absolutely on the job, was there to accomplish, try to, in the way of what we could. So, you know, for whatever that's worth, which is nothing, but...
Well, it's worth quite a bit, quite honestly. I mean, that's, we go to these conferences, and, you know, it's quite an investment of resources to go to them, and I think it's important that we bring good information back. And, you know, my feeling was that the information presented, it didn't fit with Ames Community College, where we're going and how we operate or anything. It didn't fit at all. It fit with colleges that operate a whole lot differently and have different goals, objectives, and strategies, and, but it didn't fit very well. Now, meeting with the different legislatures, I got quite a bit out of that. We got to talk to them and everything. I felt that I could do, and I have done the same thing right here at home. And I could actually meet with them in person, where most of the time, when you're back there, you meet with an aide or someone, and then they're supposed to take that information. That's far different than one-on-one conversation with our representatives back there, which you can get face-to-face here at home. I think probably the biggest benefit and the thing I enjoyed most about it was visiting with trustees from other colleges, just one-on-one and casual time, you know, sitting and having a cup of coffee and talking about things. I got, I got, I felt very, very good about that, about sharing information and sharing different operations and strategies and philosophies and things like that. And especially when you meet someone who operates similar to we and have the same challenges and resources, if you will, than we do, you know, that are similar to us. So that's a benefit.
I was going to take off on that idea too, Mr. Chairman, but there is a benefit, there's no doubt, of this intermingling and conversations with others from other institutions, and, you know, you pick up some ideas and frankly, you plant some ideas too. You know, you get a chance to say, you know, well, here's what we're doing in that situation or this situation. But I'm not sure that that overrides or, you know, makes the expense of everything, you know, worth it, because it is a big expense. It really is. Not cheap to do these things.
Heidi, you got something to say?
Well, I was wondering, Carrie, if I don't receive the blue pamphlet in the mail, is there an email address or a website that I could? I'd like to see what they offer. I haven't looked.
Yes, I can give you this one.
Okay.
Plus, if you go out to the ACCT website, which I will forward you the link, it has information on speakers and the schedule and stuff, so...
Well, I could do that, just, I don't need the book then.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, well, having said all that, that's, you know, that's our opinions of having attended it before, and it's what we saw. Now, given, having said that, each conference is different. They do have, they do have different topics. They do have different speakers. So the bottom line is, we need to be responsible, and we are. So take a look at the catalog and peruse it and make your individual decisions, and then, like Carrie, no. Certainly welcome to go, and the invitation is open to everyone, so. Any other comments?
Carrie, I will not be attending.
I'm sure I won't. I wanted to see.
Because of the COVID concerns.
No, I don't think I'll go, but I'd like to see what's offered.
I think for what Ray talked about, the intermingling and the conversations, those are always, you know, that's worth, you know, that's worth it. The ACCT, that's what that's all about to me, is the connectivity.
Like Jane said, if they're offering that COVID shot ice.
Chuck says we're cutting back on travel, right? So we gotta save some. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Our tuition's going up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and to Carrie, I won't be going either because I'm in my throes of my career on the Ames Board, and I don't think I ought to be gone, so.
Well, and for the record, Carrie, I won't be going.
Hey, Heidi, it's up to you.
Well, I mean, we don't have, don't feel pressured. We don't have to go.
If I have a trip to Florida for now the month each year, so that's one of my reasons for going.
Okay, selfish. Let's move on, folks. Next on the agenda, the CEO President's Report. Dr.?
Yes, thank you. So we'd like to start with Dr. Russ Rotharmer, who would be giving the EVP and Chief Academic Officer highlights for the month.
Dr. Bornstein, can you still hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Darn it.
Chair Oxiger, members of the board, thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I have an abbreviated report for you today, and I wanted to pull out three specific highlights from the board packet just to share some of the significant happenings that are going on in academic affairs. The first one I wanted to share from Allied Health and Wellness is our 2020 Graduate Cohort Nursing Program success, so truly successful, a whole program and the support of the college for that program. But 95% of Ames 2020 nursing graduates passed the NCLEX RN certification, and that's the...
Oh, wow.
And that's the National Council Licenseur Examination for Registered Nursing. And just to put it in perspective, I mean, 95% is absolutely awesome. The national average pass rate for the exam, to put it in perspective, is just under 86%. So again, so congratulations to everyone.
That's great.
The other, you know, this might be a kind of sharing some honors part, but Fort Lupton, as you may know, in the 2020 Trappers days, they awarded the Ames Fort Lupton Campus as a top business. So congratulations to everyone who makes Fort Lupton. Another highlight coming from one of our satellite campuses, as you'll see in your packet, the Loveland Campus hosted Student Art Show. And as many of you know, that the show was commonly held in April, but it was presented virtually this year in October, and you'll see in your packet some pictures of some artwork. So wanted to thank the Loveland Campus for being flexible and continuing to partner with the community on this important event. And the last thing I wanted to share, kind of in relation to this overall report, I've spoken with Deans Abernathy and Smith, and we discussed adding an additional section to this report, highlighting the great work that is happening on our satellite campuses as opposed to just embedding that within the divisions, because it's certainly enough wonderful things happening that we want to highlight that along with the other divisions with the college. And with that, answering any questions that you may have, and that would conclude my report for this month.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions? Dr. Peterson?
Dr. Rotharmer, on the issue of the nurses, 95% graduating, that's just a, that's a one-shot kind of thing. In other words, at that particular test, 95 of the students pass, which is great. I mean, that's wonderful, but then the other 5%, will get another shot?
Yes, sir. We'll have enough.
So we could end up with 100%.
Correct.
Passing, it just would take a couple of times. That's what I wanted to know. So thank you.
Good question. All right. Thank you, Russ. We would like, I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. Dr. Jensen would like to both give us the report from the external auditor, a budget update for the month, and highlights from administrative services.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Trustee Peterson, excellent question. Yes, the county has until December 10th to send us the certification, so the 8th will not work.
It's about to just move it down.
Yeah, I have to move it down to next week, so, thank you. Excellent catch there, yeah, that's moving that, moving that head there. I have before you, my first part of my report will be a report out of the financial statement audit. A week and a half ago, the auditor met with the audit committee, and the audit committee, of course, is comprised of Chair Oxiger, Trustee O'Hara, President Bornstein, Kara Berg, our controller, Assistant Vice President, Chris Peterson, our Executive Director of Financial Aid, and myself. So I'll give a quick report out of what the auditor presented in the exit on the interview. Again, this is the audit for fiscal year '20. It comprised of three parts: our financial statements, our single audit, and our federal and state-funded financial aid. Of course, the purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion as to whether our financial statements are in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, and the audit was performed in accordance with auditing standards. The audit report will be issued in early December. The results of the audit. The opinion is unmodified, which means it's a clean audit. There are no restrictions placed on it by the auditor. There was only one minor audit adjustment to our financial statements, and the auditor was very complimentary of that. Usually, in organizations of this size, you see multiple financial statement audits or adjustments that the auditor recommends. So they only had one. We agreed with it and made the adjustments to the statements. And I won't get into the accounting details on that, but it had to do with the way we record our gross revenue from the county versus net, and so it was an accounting, accounting issue behind that. The auditor did make one comment on our internal controls in our Banner system. They noted that there are people that have access to the entire process. Though the auditor found no issue with this in the review of it, they asked that we review our authorization structure to ensure proper segregation. And again, this is all changing dynamically as we leave Banner and have moved into a completely new security system, structure, I should say, in Workday. There were no other significant issues discussed with management prior to the engagement, and the auditor encountered, the auditor encountered no difficulties in performing audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements and had no disagreements with management, which is always a positive thing. I'd like to, I'd like to congratulate our team, our Assistant Vice President Kara Berg and her fiscal team, and Chris Peterson, the Executive Director of Financial Aid, for, again, the continuous great work they do in keeping our accounting systems and financial aid systems up and running. So with that, I'll stand for any questions on the audit report.
Any questions? No. And no questions. I'd just like to say that was, that was fun to sit in on that. It was, it was fun to hear all the great comments about our team and about the work you do. So great job by everybody. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'll make sure to pass it along to the team.
And I would like to add that it was very comforting to hear comments from the auditors about the strong team that we have here. And, yeah, not that I would expect to hear anything other than that, but to have them feel so positive about our team and our processes and so forth was, as a board member, is nice to hear. to hear.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, it was an audit done in a remote setting. So I even added another level of complexity to it. And again, both the auditors and our teams worked together very, very well. So thank you. Okay, now for the questions of that, I'll move to the, the budget report. You have before you the budget report as of September 30th. Again, nothing too remarkable to talk about that I haven't mentioned in the past. You know, as we, of course, get into December and January, my ability to start projecting out, or Kaylee Block, our, our Budget Director, and our fiscal team, as we start to be able to project out what the fiscal year is going to look like as we get into spring semester, I'll start to be able to make some predictions coming in January, February, as to where, say, our tuition will be and some of our fees and some of the other things. So for now, as it is today, I don't have anything remarkable to talk to you about. I think in expenditures, of course, you can see that travel is way down, almost non-existent professional development. And so that's about the only remarkable thing there. So yeah, I'll, I know we had a lot of budget conversations this morning, so I'll stand for any questions on this month's report. Looks like no questions. Yeah, we continue to be, again, I continue to like to report those words, stable and the way we go forward into the fiscal year here as we concluded in June. A couple of just other quick comments from the division? Or did you have a question? Sorry.
Something just hit me. Earlier in the day, you mentioned something about gambling monies, like there was a change or something.
What I, what I made reference to was the amendment, the name of the amendment that was passed.
Okay.
And what that will allow is in the future, the cities of Black Hawk and the casino cities, they can now vote for, for expanding their gaming and limits. And any expansion, any tax revenues generated by that expansion is dedicated, like 78% of it goes to community colleges, which Ames shares part of that. So that was my reference of looking out into the future as a positive thing of what came out of the last election, that, you know, I anticipate in the future, we'll see stronger gaming revenues. And those are reported up in our state appropriations category here.
I saw the footnote here on this. Do you have any ideas to how that will be shared? I mean, this.
That's my question.
10% of the 78% or is there any?
It is. Yeah, it's actually all from, it's all driven by FTE. So they, for every dollar coming in in tax revenue, and don't quote me exactly on this, but it's like 78% of it is committed to the community colleges. And then within that category, within that calculation, it's based on FTE by the 13 community colleges and the two local district colleges. So there's 15 entities that share that tax revenue. So the bigger the pool, the bigger the distribution to the community colleges and the local district colleges.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, get, get to gambling.
Get to the hills.
Yeah. And again, you know, those are going to be revenues we see down the road. I mean, and so with that, no other questions on budget, I'll make a couple of other quick comments. Okay. Again, as you've noticed, the steel is up on the Welcome Center. That's moving ahead, yeah, on pace. We're going to be starting to transitioning our staff from the College Center into the temporary buildings here in the next couple, three weeks. So that'll be a lot of, lot of logistics there as we move the staff and for them to be ready for services come January 4th in the new, in the new facilities, in the new temporary facilities. So again, lots of hard work on FNO's part, on student services, on learning commons, the whole, everybody within the, within the Student Center right now, lots of, lots of good work there. And so, yeah, and we'll start to, after we get moved out of the College Center, we'll start to see some staging happening, happening here in December, early January. And then we anticipate them starting to tear into the College Center in January. So progress, the weather's been favorable and away we go. So that concludes my report.
I just got to say, Chuck, one thing, the logistics of getting this done has got to be incredible. Whoever sets this up and figures this out is, in my mind, genius. When I drove by and looked at those buildings and I thought about how all that came together and all the planning and everything else, and it always goes so smoothly. So, I mean, hats off to all the people who are involved in that. It's incredible. That's good luck.
I agree. Yes, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. The next on the President's Report is Dee Schultz with Human Resources and the Safety Clary Report. So you may recall on your board calendar, once a year, we get an update from HR. And once a year, we present the Clary Safety Report. So Dee, take it away, and you'll find the accompanying information in your packet.
Good afternoon, trustees and Dr. Bornstein. During my report, I will repeat some sentiments already shared, but I think they are worth repeating. During this past year, Human Resources, which includes Center for Professional Development and Campus Safety and Security, transitioned into two units, one we were excited about and one not so much, the Workday and COVID Teams. I will start with the one we're, we're very excited about. Finance and HR completed the launch implementation phase of Workday. This implementation could not have been accomplished without our fearless leaders in the IT Department. And I want to give a big thanks to Brad, Andrea, and their team for their support during this process. This was quite a feat on several levels. One, the implementation team was accomplished in less than 12 months, which is unheard of. And two, midway through the implementation, the team had to transition to remote work. This was all accomplished in the effort to ensure student and academics would be able to start their implementation this past July. So great job to all who made this happen. Campus Safety and Security, along with our staff in CPD and several HR staff, had to transition to the COVID team to address any COVID-related issues and assist cabinet and the rest of the college with the reentry phases. New processes, guidelines, and communications had to be created to support employees as we navigated through federal and state orders from the time we moved fully remote to partial reentry. In your packet, you have some COVID-related data, which I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. It's important to recognize the college-wide support during this time. Everyone came together to assist in these efforts with a primary focus to continue to support our students and provide the best learning opportunities possible under these circumstances, excuse me, under these circumstances. MarCom, Administrative Services, Facilities and Operations, IT, Reprographics, SACE, Academic Affairs, Faculty and Staff, and our leaders in the President's Office. Everyone has done an amazing job in keeping our mission strong. On behalf of Ames employees, I would like to thank you, trustees, for your recognition in these efforts and providing a generous gratitude leave. This leave has been set up in Workday and is now accessible to all eligible employees. Again, thank you so much. During this time, we have continued with ongoing efforts to help Ames stay healthy. Some of these efforts include offering free, free onsite flu shots. 170 employees and 20 students took advantage of this offering. Virtual counseling sessions are available every Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. These sessions begin in mid-October and will run through mid-December. Utilization of our EAP Employee Assistance Program resources is up from 20% the prior year to approximately 35%. These services include support in many areas, including legal, financial, work-life, or counseling referrals. And we, and we are able, as, as you heard before, to pull off a modified social distancing health fare where 62 employees were able to receive their annual blood screening onsite, which is a great convenience for our employees. These are just a few of the continued efforts we are taking to keep employees healthy. We also launched our employee engagement survey. We are hoping all employees will participate so we can hear how we have been doing. The intent of this survey is to provide data on how we, how we have been able to stay engaged this past year. Prior surveys were completed in 2017 and 18, which will provide a baseline for comparison. In your report, the employee profile data is a one-time snapshot as of September 2019 and 2020. As you can see on page two of your report, our employee headcount has been consistent over the past two years. These numbers do not reflect positions that are currently vacant or positions that were just filled in the last month or so. We have increased our faculty numbers, which include increased employees in the aviation program. Gender, age, tenure, ethnicity profiles continue to be fairly consistent over the past several years. There is a slight increase of Hispanic or Latino employees from 7.5% three years ago to 12.5% two years ago, and now reporting 15%. Turnover rate is significantly down to just over 5%, whereas turnover in higher ed has increased to, to just over 14%. In our recruiting efforts this past year, we have successfully filled 444 positions and screened slightly over 3,000 applicants. We continue to offer amazing health benefits for our employees, which can be a deciding factor in our recruiting efforts. Under our talent management and retention efforts, we are very fortunate and continue to offer a wide variety of professional development opportunities, wellness activities, as mentioned earlier, and continued education opportunities with support with our tuition waiver and reimbursement benefit. Obviously, some of these numbers are down due to COVID. However, in recent months, virtual professional development opportunities are on the rise. All of these learning opportunities definitely impact our recruiting and retention efforts in a very positive way. As a final comment, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of our veterans for their service. That concludes my report. Before I turn the next portion over to John, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Dee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. John, feel free to step right in with the Clary and Safety Report.
All right. Good afternoon, board, and good afternoon, Dr. Bornstein. Hopefully, everybody can hear me loud and clear.
Yes, we can.
All right. So this here is Annual Security Report, our federally mandated report on what occurs on our campuses across college wide. I'd like to present it to you. First, I'll start off with giving you maybe a little history of the report and where we get this from. The Gene Clary Report was developed in 1986. This report, after a young lady who attended Lehigh University was found brutally murdered in her dorm room. So after that, the Fed, it came out to all financial-supported institutions saying that any kind of statistics and crimes, certain crimes that are happening on campus must be available and published every year. So any incoming students or anybody can obtain that information to be aware of that. I'll go to the next slide. So as I said, what we do now is collect and count and classify the crime reports and crime statistics for each campus location. This is for all campuses, including, we include Early College. And this year, as one of our non-campus properties, we also include the dormitories where we have students in the Ames to UNC program. So you will start seeing statistics that fall under the non-campus category that fall into that program. This is an annual report that's usually due on October the 1st, but due to COVID, federally, we were given a little bit of grace, and it's not due until the end of December. So if we start off with the Clary requirements for criminal offenses, there are eight types of offenses that we must report. These conclude murder, manslaughter, sets offenses, which conclude forcible or non-forcible, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, motor vehicle theft, and arson. We also are responsible for reporting any kind of hate crimes, our crimes that result in disciplinary action, which could be alcohol violations, drug violations, weapon violations, only that occur on our campuses. On campus, as I stated, is any building that is located right on our campus, on the Greeley Campus. And what they, how Clary defines that would be from our sidewalk, street sidewalks. So that's considered our campus. So anything that happens in that area or on those grounds, we are responsible to report. And how do I get these statistics? I actually reached out to Loveland PD, I actually reached out to Will County and Greeley PD and obtained statistics from them on all this information and from their record reporting to make sure it is accurate. And we are also included to, included in our report, the Vol Act Report, which is the Violence Against Women's Act. So I worked very closely with Stephanie Lucero, who's our timeline coordinator, to make sure we have the statistics and we're doing all the training and obligations in regards to the Vol Act to reflect on our Clary as well. So as you can see, this year, and just so you're aware, this is the 2020 Annual Security Report, but we are only required to reflect the statistics from 2019. So it's always a year behind, and it goes from January the 1st. So these are from 2019, all the statistics that would happen on any of our campuses. And it was a really, really quiet year. It was really nice when you reach out to, reach out to local police departments and they come back and say, hey, we don't have anything on for you, John. Everything is clear. There's nothing really to report to you. So there's really no statistics to really stand out. There was one non, non-campus report, which would have occurred on our Early College Academy campus. But other than that, there was nothing for our main Greeley Campus or Fort Lepton or Windsor or Loveland, either of those campuses that we needed to report on this year's 2019 report. Just going through right there, legal weapons and drug violations, all that's been pretty good. So our students have been very well behaved and doing what they have to do in 2019, and we expect that to continue in 2020. Does anybody have any questions for me in regards to this report?
I do. Is this posted for the students to see in a certain area?
Yes, it's a very good question. Actually, because like I said, it's not due until December this year, there will be a mass notification coming out to all employees and students. And this report will be available on the Campus Safety and Security website. I believe, I believe it's also available under the President's Reports on, on her website as well.
Thank you.
No problem.
This, part of what John was mentioning and part of the act is that this needs to be public information and publicly accessible. So as John mentioned, certainly on the Safety and Security webpage, we keep these reports so that folks know the safety of the institution and they can make decisions in that regard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
You too. Dee, is there anything else you wanted to mention with the HR Annual Report before we move on?
No, I, I don't have anything else to mention.
Okay. Thank you, Dee.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Zach McFarlane, who's the Director of Marketing Communication, who would like to give us some highlights on MarCom and specifically some information about where we are with our website project. And Zach, if you're out there, feel free to take the screen.
I am here. I'm going to share my.
I am here. I'm gonna share my screen.
Oh, you got it, Eric.
I did. How, you like that? I'm gonna share my screen real quick. Tell me if it, uh, works. Everybody see that?
Yes.
And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, yeah, so gonna do a quick update on the, uh, website, specifically, um, the video project. So, excuse me, if you remember, uh, part of the, the website project is to highlight each degree program um, with a degree-specific video. So these would be, uh, faculty highlights where they can kind of showcase the program in a very visual way. Um, why we want to do video when it pertains to the website is, you know, outside of just the written word, it really helps people make informed decisions. Um, it gets people to kind of like us, to trust us, to see a friendly face, um, that, that they can kind of relate to. Um, really allows the faculty to showcase a personality. Um, so we can also kind of demonstrate what that program looks like, um, really classically just showing, uh, versus telling. Uh, making sure that they can see all of the amazing facilities that Ames has to offer and, and get a sense of, of what it will be like once they're here, um, at Ames in these programs. Um, also technically speaking, keeps people on our site longer. That has a lot of benefits to, uh, website traffic and, and search ability, um, as, as these individuals come on the site and start to kind of engage, uh, in the content. Excuse me. Um, some additional benefits of video is that we can take a, a two-minute video. Let's say we can trim that up into 10, 20-second bites, um, and, and then post those on social, uh, think places like social media and email, so that we can, um, continue to generate more traffic. Uh, we can put them on YouTube. Uh, I don't know, you know this, but YouTube is the second largest search engine in the world, um, right behind Google. So, uh, that gives us the op- opportunity again to draw in more traffic. Uh, and then the other thing that, that I like to do when we, we do videos, we, we go and we interview these, these faculty members, a, a two-minute video. Typically, you will have interviewed them about an hour, maybe two in some instances. Um, and you're trimming all of that amazing content into a two-minute, um, you know, bit. And so what we can also do is take all of that content, get an audio transcript in a file, um, and then, uh, download that into a Word doc, and we take that and we can actually start to develop, uh, more web-related content, um, written word based off of all of the amazing things, um, that the faculty, um, said about the program. So really, you know, wh- when we started the website project, I, I think I was kind of half joking. I said, hey, it would, it'd be awesome to launch the website with, uh, a faculty video for every single program that we have at Ames. Um, so, um, and, and we would have a couple of years in which to do that. Really, when we think about it, we're talking about 43 programs, right? There's 43 programs we would want to have a two-minute video for. What that boils down into is about 32 different faculty members, once we talk to them, um, because, uh, some of them would represent multiple programs, two, three programs. So 43 videos, 32 faculty members, you know, figured we would take a year or two to kind of wrangle them in and, and work toward that goal. When you're shooting a video, there's a lot involved. This is just a, a basic, um, overview, right? You have to do a pre-interview. Um, that's kind of an interview with them to understand the story that you want to tell, um, for the video. Uh, then you do the interview itself. That's day of, cameras on. Um, the faculty will, will sit in front with the, with the, uh, video crew and do the actual interview. And then you shoot B-roll. B-roll is, you know, we don't want to shoot an uninteresting video with just somebody talking the whole time. You want to get actual shots of the program itself. Um, I'm gonna show you the welding video here in a minute. Uh, so you want people actually welding, you want to get, um, good shots of, of the program so that it's interesting. Um, a pre-interview takes about an hour. Um, after that, they write an outline, a story. They, they work back and forth with the faculty member to do that. That's probably another hour of time. Interview is one to two hours if you have one program, three to four hours if you have multiple programs. Um, B-roll, uh, getting all the shots, another hour, hour and a half, again, three to four if you have, um, multiple programs. And then editing and post-production is, is, uh, another significant amount of time, uh, and that's where we currently sit. It's, it's, it's pretty amazing when I, when I think back, you know, um, we had kind of said, hey, well, let's, let's shoot toward launching the site with at least the, the faculty ones. We also want to do some student testimonials, but, and then COVID hit, and, and I really didn't, um, have any anticipation that we would be launching with video. Uh, but we ended up having a, you know, once everybody kind of got back rolling, we started thinking about it again, saying, hey, maybe we do have an opportunity to get a couple of these things. And, uh, and we'll see how it goes. But what we ended up doing was blocking out two weeks. So let's just get as many as we can. We'll shoot maybe 15 of these. We'll, we'll, we'll be in a good position. And, and what we ended up doing, which is insane, this is an example of the schedule that, that was, uh, put together in about a week's time, is we, within a two-week span, we blocked out two weeks. We ended up scheduling all 43, uh, of those videos, which is really quite unbelievable. Um, I had no expectation that would happen. And you'll see here, you know, this is an example of what, what the days look like, Monday through Friday, with the video team, uh, the video crew, and then, uh, the different faculty members kind of fit in. You also notice, we decided to give them lunch, a lunch break on Wednesday. We had one spot right where they could eat. And so it's, uh, you know, so it was, there's a second week that looks just like this. Um, and that was, if I counted correctly, this right here is 22 videos being shot with all of that work um, that I kind of showed you earlier, um, in, in one week, right? And then the next week was, uh, another 21, uh, which I think equals 43. So we got all of them done, and I, and I just want to, uh, to highlight a couple of people. Um, Brenda, the, the marketing communications team staff administrator. Uh, this was, again, unexpected. Um, I, 15, 20 videos maybe over two weeks for her to have scheduled um, 43 of those, and that includes the pre-interviews that happened a week or two prior with every single faculty member, all of that week. Um, getting lunches kind of delivered to the, the film crew, um, so that they could keep rolling, um, all of the different locations. We, we typically go right to the faculty, uh, to the program site. So for a Windsor-based program, you're over at PSI, um, Greeley or in Greeley, it, and the coordination of that was, was crazy. Um, also just the faculty, you know, there was 32 faculty members. And one thing that always shines through is just the faculty's, um, passion for their programs, right? Uh, there is absolutely no way that we could have shot that amount of videos without faculty um, really accommodating their schedules and working around, um, the timeframes and, and filling in the slots on those calendars. Uh, and so this is just a, a significant team effort, Ames-wide, um, to do a project, you know. It, it's all they've ever wanted, and if you talk to them about the website or video or anything, is, is their program's just represented well so students can, um, enroll and, and be excited about the, the, uh, the work that they're about to do, and, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. So to have them just accommodate, um, and fill in their own schedules was, was, uh, was phenomenal and very much appreciated. And then the video crew, obviously, coming up here for, for two straight weeks, or two weeks, we broke them apart, um, a little bit there, was, was great. We chose the right partner and, uh, and, and, uh, are in really good shape as a result. Uh, so we're gonna show you one here in a second, the welding video, um, for the welding program. It's about two, two minutes and 20 seconds long. Uh, one thing that's not in that video are graphics. We're waiting on the website design elements to finish before we put graphics on, so they'll look even better when it's done. Uh, but at this point, I am projecting that we will launch the website, our stretch goal would be, uh, late spring, with a video for every program that Ames offers. Um, again, just a, a Herculean effort that's, uh, really, um, surprising. Um, if barring COVID situation, uh, or setbacks, we would also be seeking to launch, uh, the website with about 15 student testimonials, which we'd be, uh, starting to look at scheduling those, excuse me, um, right around spring. So with that, I believe Carrie is gonna load up the video. We'll see if that works. And then once that's done, I can, uh, stand for questions.
Hi, I'm Jeff Klein. I'm a full-time faculty member here in the welding department at Ames Clarity College. Students that tend to be passionate about welding are those who maybe are mechanically inclined, who love working with your hands, who find thrill and enjoyment in maybe seeing a project happen from beginning to end and being able to see that completely through. Ames College has done an amazing job of making sure that the facilities are second to none. Each welding student has their own welding booth for each class session. So when the instructor walks around, we're meeting with the student individually. There's plenty of space, plenty of opportunity, and the students have their own equipment in the shop. The faculty in the welding program have been around for quite some time. I've been in the program for over 20 years. We have part-time faculty members who have done lots of aluminum welding. We've had others in the construction industry. And so what that really provides for you is the opportunity to meet faculty members who have experiences that can help shape and guide you through your journey. And that's ultimately what we want to do. We want our students to learn more than just about welding. Our hope is that we can be a part of their journey, that we can help them create better opportunities for themselves. I think one of the amazing things about learning how to weld and knowing how to weld is the satisfaction that you have in bringing in raw material. You've got this idea in your head, maybe you've got it drawn down on paper. You begin fabricating, cutting the parts, assembling the parts, punching holes, drilling holes, shearing pieces, and at the end, you have the final result. There is an amazing satisfaction and feeling that you get when you know that you have created that piece. As a graduate myself of the welding program at Ames, I see the opportunities that the welding program has offered me, and I'm confident it can do the same for you.
All right, it was a little sketchy right there. Um, what, we can send out the video link, and you'll be able to see that without, um, the buffering that was happening and such, so.
Zach, we didn't have the, um, instability that you're describing. It went through fairly well.
It went fine.
Yeah, it was fantastic. And I don't know if you heard all of us clapping, but we were clapping at the end.
Oh, good, good. It's hard to make a bad video when you can have fire.
You know, just a comment as I was watching that, it's, it's called welding, but there's a whole lot of other stuff going on in there. I mean, you're learning about cutting metals and...
Designing.
Designing.
Creating.
Fabricating.
Measures and, uh, it's just...
Mathematics.
Amazing.
Yeah, really is.
Absolutely.
And to echo what Zach was saying, um, well, a couple of echoings. You know, he was thinking that it was gonna take us about 18 months to get all this done, and, you know, it's taking weeks, which is incredible.
Yep.
And to have something like this for every single program we have, I know you can't see me, but I'm really smiling. Cause that's, this is amazing, cause we can use it not only on the website, but we can use it for recruiting trips. We can, you know, send it to different places. It's really just, it's gonna be fantastic to have that kind of collateral to use, which is fabulous. Yeah.
Really great.
Well, and I gotta tell you, that's a quality video. I mean, that, that's no B-movie. That's, I mean, that's professional stuff. Uh, you know, if there isn't Academy Awards for these kinds of things, I think they'd probably win it. That, that's very, very professional.
Well, we appreciate it.
It helps to answer that question that came up earlier. How are we going to grow our student population? I was gonna say the same thing. It's a very effective marketing.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Which is information.
The whole website should help us quite a bit, you know, and this is a significant part of that, is, is giving, uh, prospective students a, a much better glimpse of what Ames offers, and I'm excited.
So was the, the photography, the, was that an outside outfit? That wasn't an internal?
No, this, this one, uh, this one was outsourced to a company called Proper Films, and they're based out of Denver. Some high-end experience, but, um, very, very, um, very good, uh, film crew, uh, did an excellent job. And we'll continue to see, you know, 42 more of these trickle in as they edit them over the next, uh, three months.
Would, um, would these launch onto any other platforms like Snapchat and things like that for advertising purposes, or can you do that?
Yeah, one, part of the proposal that, that we did with Proper is they'll deliver a final two-minute video. Uh, right, but then another thing, another deliverable under that contract is, is that they will also have, uh, anywhere between five and 10 shorter clips of that video that we'll be able to send to other channels, like you're mentioning, uh, Snapchat, even YouTube, um, Instagram, any of Facebook, all of those, uh, social channels.
Zach, are there any other highlights that you want to give for MarCom for this month?
I think that'll do it for me, unless there's any other questions.
Do you mind if I share the most recent Wallet Hub data that we just got?
Oh, yeah, you bet.
Okay, so Wallet Hub, um, and Zach, you might be able to, need to help me. Wallet Hub is a national sort of, hmm, organization that rates different, uh, groups and areas over time. Is there anything else that you want to say about Wallet Hub?
Uh, no, that's about it, yeah.
Okay. So they just did, um, a nationwide community college assessment of over 650 community colleges, and nationwide, we have about 1,100. Uh, and A, and this, this assessment was evaluating on certain key points on quality and cost. Ames came out 22nd in the nation and first in the state. So don't you know, Zach and his team are gonna be using that too. And I just want to thank Ellen Sweeter and Jeff Smith for passing that information on, cause they, they came across that, um, yesterday and passed that along to us. So that's awesome news. So just want to share that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too.
You too.
Uh, moving on, Dr. Sarah Weiskaver would like to give us some highlights from the SACE division and then specifically talk a little bit about our student wellness and, um, Mark, I think this goes to some of your questions that you had before about how our students are doing, um, during this time. And, uh, Sarah, you have the screen whenever you're ready.
Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Axiger, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Bornstein. Um, we've made it to November, and I've made it through the entire board meeting up until now with my dogs not barking, so. So I apologize if you can hear them. I, uh, last month I stood before you in Windsor, and, um, I shared with you that we had made it to midterms. And as we heard from our students this morning, um, from the additional guest speakers that we've had, um, this last month has been a little bit of a, of a getting-through process. And so, um, unlike last month, I can't tell you that we've made it to a milestone, but I can absolutely tell you that we, we are making it through, um, slowly but surely, um, with tweaks here and there as needed, um, for, in the best interest of the students, um, the faculty and the staff. So in terms of highlights, um, I, I just would share with you, um, one of the most significant things. There's two pretty significant things happening right now within the operation in the SACE division. Um, the first is we are heavy, uh, heavily invested at the moment in, uh, a Workday ERP, um, partnering very closely with academics and IT. Um, we have put together this amazing team who is, um, really just smashing away expectations in terms of their progress and what they're doing. So, um, we are green lights all the way down and very excited about the progress that we're making there. Um, so definitely want to thank IT and thank the staff, um, and partners over in Academic Affairs for working through us with, working through that pro- process with us. The second considerable thing is we're moving. Um, we're really excited. Everybody's packing and packing and packing over in the College Center. Um, folks in the SACE division, the Learning Commons, uh, folks in the Bistro are packing. Uh, we're getting ready to exit the building, um, for all, for most services that are offered in the building. Um, around December 14th, um, we'll officially completely leave the building the following week. By the time January 4th rolls around, we will... By the time January 4th rolls around, we will be in Artie's Borough. And that will be January 4th, we'll be, we will be open for business. So we're really excited about that. Our communications will start going out about that next week to students and to staff and faculty so everybody knows where to find everybody. And, and so we're really looking forward to that. I have to say, you know, earlier you talked about the building projects and just the amazing leadership and vision. And I will tell you that working with the FNO team has been incredible. They have supported and helped us every step of the way and really allowed us to focus on student service and, and giving us a lot of great directions. So we're excited about that. I would like to turn your attention to the, the wellness report. But before I do that, I just want to see if there's any questions about the Workday project or the moving project or anything else kind of in the student area that you might like to discuss before we talk about the wellness report.
Looks like everyone's good, Sarah. We're good.
Great. So I'd like to, you to, turning your packet to the wellness report. This is not an annual report. The reason that I included this report in your packet today is because it marks the completion of one of our strategic plan tactics. Woo-hoo, very excited about that. I know Dean McCaslin is really excited about this, and I think it couldn't come at a better time. So part of our work was really around raising awareness and enhancing our programming. We've done that through some different online portals and on-demand wellness education that allows students to completely personalize their wellness experience. I've set up my own account. I can check in and see how things are going. It's a great resource. It's a new resource, so we continue to encourage students to use that and to, you know, explore the different ways they can really be in control of their own health and wellness through these different types of technologies. When we think about wellness at Ames Community College, one of the, the central pillars of wellness is our care team and the work we do for care. Care is a report and a team and a program that, that we've put together probably about six or seven years ago now. And it was designed to serve as a receptacle to, for faculty and staff to communicate concerns about students to another group of people who can reach out and help those students. So what I've showed you here is our November 19 to November 2020, just so you could be understanding kind of accurate exactly where we are. In the last year, we received 240 care reports. Of those care reports that come in from faculty, from staff, sometimes even from other students, we find that the top three most challenging issues for students right now are financial stress and hardship, and these feelings of feeling overly anxious, stressed, overwhelmed. There's other concerning behaviors which really can't be quantified, but these things kind of can play into, you know, issues with students having a hard time adjusting to their current living environment, students having a hard time finding access to medical care. So it can range the gamut in terms of, of what we do to support students. Once the care team receives those reports, we reach out to students, we make contacts, we help refer them out to community resources and to other resources at the institution. One of those resources is the Student Emergency Fund, and you'll see that at the bottom left-hand corner of your page. In total, in the last year, we've received 228 applications for the Student Emergency Fund. So there we're seeing that correlation between the most significant need we see in the care report is financial hardship and, and stress around finances. And we see that then supported through the data in the Student Emergency Fund. 89 of those applications were funded through the Student Emergency Fund. And you might be thinking, well, why? If you had 230 applications, why did you only fund 89? And this goes back to talking about partnership between the different areas in the Stace Division. So as part of the partnership work of the care team, we also reach out to financial aid to determine if the students have any additional aid that they might be eligible for. So you can see the majority, in the majority of these situations, students are eligible for additional aid, and oftentimes aid much greater than what we would be, we would be able to provide through the Student Emergency Fund. If we move on, I'd like to talk about another pillar on the next page, page two there, of student wellness, and that is our counseling team. I'd like to start with our counseling team because it's taken us many years to develop a counseling program, a student counseling program that is, is strong as, as this one is. As you see here, we have three counselors, a care case manager, as well as a director of counseling. All of our counselors have the appropriate and impressive credentials that require them to be able to counsel students both at the Ames campus, but also in private practice if they were to choose. And that's an important point because what that tells me about our, our counseling team is their passion for Ames, their passion for our students because of the work that they can do here versus work they might be able to do in private practice. Some different things we've done operationally to help that team move more smoothly is implementing unique counseling software that allows us to stay within HIPAA regulations, but serves as a central repository for all of our compliance and client files. When I ask, when we ask the counselors, what do you, what are the most significant issues you see students about? They identified anxiety, depression, and life stressors. If we go back to our conversation with Mike Lieben, as he kicked us off with excellence at Ames, I think we can hear some of what he shared with us echoed here in this report. On page three of the report, we move into COVID, and COVID has intensified and exacerbated a lot of the issues around student wellness, whether those issues are financial, they're emotional, they're mental. It has, as is done for every single one of us, there is not a person in this room, so to speak, who isn't experiencing some level of intensification emotionally or mentally or physically as a result of COVID. And so because of the care team, because of SEF funding, and because of communications, we were better able to respond to the COVID pandemic because we already had these key programs in place. Finally, and trustee Howe, I think this is the page you've been wanting to talk about for, for a while now, is, is looking at Artie's Pantry. We see this is a special time of year. It's one of the reasons I like to present about student wellness and specifically our basic needs during this time of year because we see those needs start to increase a little bit. I can share with you that from November 1, 19 to 2020, we've, we've been, we had 189 unique attendees. So 189 students regularly use Artie's Pantry. The total visits was, was, you know, over 800. During COVID, when we weren't necessarily able to help students with direct giving food back and forth when we were fully remote, we were able to help provide students with digital gift cards to Walmart that allowed them to get some of these much-needed goods that we, that we have in the pantry currently. I just want to put a plug out there as we're talking about the pantry and say, you know, you are always welcome to donate. This is a great time of year to donate. You can donate at the, the new location in the pantry, which is in Ed Beatty Hall. You can also, if you don't, if you're avoiding, if it's too peoply outside for you, you can certainly get in touch with the foundation and give in that way. So with that, I would certainly be open to answer any questions around student wellness that you all might have.
Sarah?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hey, a couple of questions. Do you have any limits on the pantry as far as the number of times per month or week? Or was there some students that you could see that, you know, they need really coming weekly? Or, or was there, what kind of limits did we have on, on participation, I guess? Can you hear me on that?
Yeah, so we actually changed our limits. And you can see that kind of on that last page, trustee Howe, under number two, it goes over this. So previously, students were allowed to pick up five items twice a week. We have moved that system online now so that it's easier for students to make requests. And this allows students to pick up 10 items once per week. So, so it's about five items twice a week, 10 items once a week. That's kind of, kind of the limit there.
Okay, and then I have another question, going back to your counseling and things like that. How many students, I guess, and this is a question that Chuck and I have talked about, is, you know, we provide the counseling service and we know that they're in trouble or something like that. Do we have ways to refer them? Or could we look at, I don't know if we could get cooperative with Weld Mental Health or, or even a local, like, family's physicians and have a PA that would be able to assist some students with other needs that are more medical? They don't have a resource.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you and Chuck have dialogued about that. He and I have dialogued about that as well. We actually, right before COVID, were working with Sunrise to see if we could have a, a bus that would come out and do some work with us and, and be at Ames on a regular basis. COVID changed some of those pieces, but we certainly have a very strong relationship where we refer students. They don't have to have health insurance, and so that's one of the best pieces about it is that they'll serve any student, and their grant is designed to do exactly that, to serve some of our lowest-income kind of highest-risk individuals in the community. And so we continue to refer and to work with folks over at Sunrise.
Is it comfortable enough for them to get that service? I mean, do they actually get it, or is it a little bit more distant, I guess? I'm looking for something, is it very user-friendly, I guess, that's?
I think, you know, there's always a challenge. There's always a challenge with trying to get across town, especially for individuals who don't have vehicles of their own, given that the students are out here at Ames. Sunrise is down on 11th. There, I suspect there are challenges. Though I wouldn't be 100% positive, and I don't know that I could say yes or no to that, trustee Howe, because I'm not sure where the students live. This is certainly something we can ask in our assessment, kind of rate, like, how accessible are the services that we're referring to? And might have some better data for you after we do some assessment next year. I do know that as we move forward into the, the next strategic plan, that will be certainly a focus, that we'll be examining opportunities and, and what that could look like for stronger partnerships in the community.
One more.
Absolutely, I love it. This is, you're talking my language.
How short is Artie's Pantry? How short? I mean, are you running out of things? Are you broke?
I will say that we are, right now, we're focusing on doing some Thanksgiving kind of pickups. And we have not received the same amount of donation that we had previous prior to COVID. So tell your friends, trustee Howe and Board.
I got a friend over here who lost a room for me.
Tell your friends, spread the word. Artie's Pantry will take as much donation as we can. And, and when it's in a monetary, when it's given to us, you know, as money form versus donations, what that allows us to do is really buy the items that students most need and also help them celebrate things like Thanksgiving or other holidays that might be important to them.
Okay. So can the college give money?
No.
No, the college can't give money. There is, we can, you know, individuals can donate.
Okay.
We can, we are set up with the foundation to do individual, like, what's the word? Removing, you know, removing money from your checks. What's that called?
Direct, yeah, direct.
Direct, yeah, yeah, right into, into a foundation line, but the college itself does not. Sarah, if I'm correct, you kind of need to check me on this. I believe some of student fees are allocated to this, and that's through the student government, student association. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, Dr. Bornstein. So, and that's the primary funding model for the food pantry is student fees and donations.
Are there any other highlights, Sarah, that you would like to offer for Stace at this time?
No, I think that's it for me.
Dr. Peterson, did you have some?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to expand a little bit on, on Mark's comment about is that Sunrise accessible? But I wonder how welcoming and excessive, yeah, welcoming, how students, how comfortable are they in going there? Is there any, is that, is there, could be a stigma or something that's?
No, I don't think so. We have had several staff members, I believe, do small tours down to Sunrise. We were planning a tour to Sunrise prior, actually about a week before COVID hit in March. I don't believe there's any stigma attached to Sunrise, and I don't know. You know, when we think about, I need healthcare. Having been a student myself, I can only speak for myself, but a student myself who didn't have insurance, who was a single parent, when you need healthcare, you need healthcare. Stigma kind of out the window, right? So, so I don't know if that helps, Peterson, but that is one way I've thought about it. And I think our students are grateful to have that resource in the community.
The other question I would have is just what, and this isn't necessarily your, asking you, but maybe more Dr. B of, where are we on COVID-19 as a campus? Or as a campuses or whatever.
Right, so, yeah, on our, on our website, we have a COVID-19 website. So when you go to the front page, right on top, you click on it, and it gives our, our numbers on, right there. And that's HR, it's Security and Marketing Communication. Keep that up to date as, certainly within several days of the dates as we get it. So our, our cases are climbing, just like Colorado is climbing. I'm not sure if you were able to check your email, I think it was last night, but I forwarded an Ames communication that was sent out to employees. In fact, that, a similar communication will be going out to students later today, early tomorrow morning, where we're just going to dial back a little bit with regard to our density so that the focus is really on the in-person classes and hybrid in-person classes so we can get those students completed for the semester. Hopefully, unless there's an executive order that comes out before then. So our cases are, are increasing just as Colorado cases are increasing, both with employees and with students. And we're being, Ames has been extremely vigilant. And we're recommitting to that, put it that way.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Curious.
Can I make one comment? Dr. Peterson's question, I'm working with Sunrise. I serve on the board for Sunrise also, and Sunrise is very interested in being a close and good partner with Ames. Student population here is really very similar to the patient population that Sunrise serves, and it, it seems like an ideal partnership in figuring out how we can be, Sunrise can be as accessible and as possible for the students here.
If, if we did do something in-house through like Sunrise, we could fund that through student fees, am I correct? Would that be the correct way to fund it?
On, so I'm going to jump in here, and, and while I, and I'm going to be the bad guy. So while I appreciate the conversation, I think this, we haven't really done any, we haven't discussed this, and we haven't done any research, so.
I understand, I understand. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so we can't answer the question, I guess, is what I'm saying, because we haven't done the research to even determine to what extent this would be. So we're interested, and some preliminary conversations have occurred, and that's, that is.
That's as far as it's.
That's as far as it's gone, so, so.
It's a whole new field.
I just want to say, great questions. We're not going to drop the ball. We're going to keep asking those questions, and we will bring something to you when, when we've got something, and then, then we can kind of create it together. But this, we're a little premature here. So, okay, just hold, just hold on.
Look at there, look at there, it's on our minds for sure.
In the pantry, how much money do you need?
A lot. You know, we, I, I would have to let Kelly Jackson take that conversation, given her role as the foundation executive director. I do have, you know, texts here from our, from Nelson Rodriguez, and he says they're doing a pretty good job staying stocked up, always welcoming donations, especially during this time of year. So if you're thinking about giving, this is a great time of year to give. And we can make sure you have, you know, Kelly, how to get in touch with Kelly Jackson. We can, Carrie can help you with that and, and move forward. We're not in a deficit right now. We're not, we're not lacking.
That's good.
So. All right, folks, well, thank you for your time. If there's no additional questions, I'll wish you a very happy November and hope you all stay safe, and certainly thank you for your time.
No, I was just going to say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, moving on, the president's report, so you'll see in their community meetings of note from October. Pretty, kind of pretty regular. I guess the one thing I will point out is I was invited to be one of a panel, a keynote speaker of a national conference from, which is Western Estate Commission for Higher Education. The topic was the value of post-secondary education in the wake of the pandemic. And I'm, and it was excellent, and I think, you know, I was the community college voice at that panel. What I, I'm chuckling a little bit about is this is the third, I don't know if you recall previous presidents' reports, but this is the third time I've been asked to be on a panel to talk about the value of higher education and the future of work in light of the pandemic and sort of what's, what's innovative and coming beyond. So I don't know how this is happening, but I seem to be gaining a reputation around this. I don't know if it's good or bad, but that seems to be, we'll just see what happens. But it was a really great conversation, timely and certainly well-attended. So I think, I, I sort of just chuckling to myself about that a little bit. Any questions about meetings of note from October? Yes, sir.
I, one, one thing that just sort of jumped out at me was the meeting with, I guess, the president of Brandon College. Is he here to?
Yes, well, actually, yeah, I'm, again, you can't see me, but I'm smiling. Do you remember a few years back, our vice president for academic affairs is Deb Kish? Do you remember a few years back, our vice president for academic affairs, her name was Deb Kish?
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure.
Okay, she was just hired as the president of Brandon College. Yes, so, so we met, I was mentoring her and a reference for her, and so we met in person to congratulate her and to kind of talk about her future and how to, you know, her first one hundred and eighty days of presidency and all that sort of thing, so. Well, yeah, I, I didn't ask her if I could do that, so I tried to keep it, you know, yeah. We will, I will tell her congratulations.
It was not unexpected that she would be.
Oh, no.
College president.
Not at all.
That certainly was her path, is her path. So, yes, any other questions? If you head to the next page, that's the employee report, you'll see new hires and folks leaving the employee of the college. And again, for those of you who are on Zoom, I apologize that we're not doing introductions, but again, when we're all in person at some point in the future, we can recognize people who've been hired in the last year, because maybe by that point, it will be a year. So everybody, welcome. If you're a new employee, we're glad you're here. Welcome to the Ames family. We're really proud that you're part of, a part of our team. And that would conclude the president's report, unless there are any further questions.
Looks like there are none. Thank you, Dr. B, for that report and from your cabinet. Very much appreciated. Comments from board members? Who wants to start?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to start if I may, and I.
You may, and welcome back, Sarah.
Well, thank you, and that's what I want to talk about. I want to thank all of you for the words of encouragement and get well soon and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I spent two weeks in the hospital. About four or five days, I don't know, I lost track of how long I was in the ICU. And the thing I remember about all of that stay mostly was how slowly that damn clock on the wall moved. I mean, it just was stuck. You know, I'd close my eyes for a minute thinking, okay, I'll take a little nap, and then I'd open it, and it'll only been three minutes or something like that, so. So anyway, thank you much. It was sure appreciated. And I have to also give a shout out to the central staff, and they're, they sent me in lieu of flowers, a box of grandma's chicken soup. And I'll tell you, boy, was that good. It was just really, really hit the spot. And, and in fact, there was some chocolate cake in there that I rationed a little bit at a time, and I'm still working on it, so. Second thing I wanted to say to you is that I, I knew I was getting sick. I, I just was worn out. Everything I did was led me to having to sit down for a while and rest. I just was so tired. And so I knew something was, was wrong. Got to the point where I had a doctor's appointment, and, and my youngest son came to pick me up, to take me to the appointment room. And he spent, this is the point of the start. He spent twenty-five years, twenty-seven years on the Cheyenne Fire Rescue. He got his start in fire science, guess where? He also is an E M T, and I'm not sure that he trained here. Well, but anyway, he was, you know, certified. So anyway, he took one look at me and he said, you know, Dad, you're going to hospital. And by that time, I was, I was ready. The final days of being in the hospital, like probably the last, maybe three or four nurses switched often, as they do in hospitals, I think. But the last three or four days, I was taken, taken care of by a wonderful young lady who happens to be in the Ames two U N C program. And will now, according to her goals, graduate with her degree in May. And so I, for sure, I would see her in May at graduation, hopefully, if we have a graduation. But the other thing about it, she is such a typical, I think, Ames student. She, oh gosh, she's getting up probably to be somewhat middle-aged, a single parent, four kids. And by God, she was going to get that degree. And I just think it was, it was, it almost made my stay worthwhile to be there. It was, every time I turned around, there was some kind of an Ames connection with the healthcare, healthcare that I was given, so. We're a good institution, folks. I mean, we really, really are, and we make a difference in this community. It's just amazing. Everybody you talk to has some, some association with, with Ames.
Thanks for sharing.
I got out of the hospital, the first thing I do is went to get a hamburger. And the young man that waited on me, Ames student. So anyway, again, thank you all for all of the good wishes. I certainly appreciate it.
We're certainly glad to have you back.
Glad to be back.
I guess I would add my comment, I had a similar experience in my hospital rotations recently on how, how many people have been to Ames, received their start in healthcare or they're, they're just getting started in healthcare. Ames has a big presence in the healthcare community in Northern Colorado. But also it catches my attention that maybe we should have been wearing masks a year ago because it must be, you know, a catchy virus or something that has gone around the board here. And we all ended up in the hospital.
It's not a competition either, so don't jump, don't jump on it.
No, you can be last.
Yeah, be careful, be careful, honey, be careful.
Then I do need, I'm going to have to run very quickly through.
I would, I would ditto everything that's been said, and when my hospital stays and pretty much anytime to get a blood draw or a R A T, take your X-rays or what have you, it's a direct connection with this college or indirect or very, very much all the time direct. The other thought, I wanted to thank Chuck today for his presentation. You know, it's a preliminary, you know, he's, he gives us realistic numbers. I think we can trust in them to be, as he says, conservative to our benefit. And if anything, he'll give us some money back at the end, just like Mike does with his spending budgets, right? And I, I appreciate that. That makes, makes the confidence level. You know, because a year ago today, you know, we jumped off a cliff ledge. And we had, we got a big parachute, you know, and Chuck's has shown us how, how it can, it can get us a safe landing. Other than that, thank you for a good meeting.
I'd like to say I really enjoyed Zach's presentation with the videos. I think that will make just a huge, it's a huge step to take and a great way to market our, our community, the Ames community, everything that's going on. So I appreciate all the hard work that they completed so quickly. And also I appreciate what Sarah's doing, especially during the COVID. She has a lot on her, on her plate, so thank you. Good meeting.
Thank you. Certainly, everyone's sentiments, I too ran into several during the hospital state of Ames students. It's just amazing. Their, their work, I love it. And provide excellent care. They always make a point to, to talk about their experience at Ames. Great meeting today. I thought one of the, the highlights, of course, was excellent settings, as it always is. So once again, Happy Veterans Day. Congratulations to the college and Dr. Rob Hammer and everybody involved in the degree program. That's a huge thing for Ames, so it was, it was great to be part of that. So with that, thank you for a great meeting. And assessment of the board meeting, Delta Plus, anybody got any comments on anything they learned? Did you have all the information you need? Any comments on that? I think we did a great job. Okay, next on the agenda, executive, executive session is allowed by Colorado revised statutes, twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent A. The board will adjourn into executive session to discuss real estate. A regular meeting is adjourned, and no, I can't do that. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Okay, Mark, you got a second. Okay, you got a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we will adjourn to executive session. When we, nothing else will be decided, no, no decisions to be made. When we come out of executive session, adjourn from that, and we'll adjourn from our regular meeting.